Good evening. I'm calling the meeting to order for the Oxford City Council for July 16, 2024. Madam-- Roll call and then post you on the agenda.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Here.
Councilmember Perello?
Here.
Mayor Portman-McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Zaragoza?
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted in the City Hall Bulletin Board.
Me, how we got Tehran came out.
Councilmember Tehran?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. The agenda for this meeting was posted in the City Hall Bulletin Board on July 3, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, item B, public comments on closed session. Any speakers either virtually or here?
Mayor Zaragoza, we do not have any speakers for this item in person or virtually.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item C, we have closed session and Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council will recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 subdivision D4 based on existing facts and circumstances to decide whether to initiate litigation in two potential cases. City Council will also recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 subdivision D1 to confer with its attorneys. The matter being discussed is Consolidated Electrical Distributors Incorporated versus J-Tech Corporation et al. The City Council will also recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Annual Evaluation of Public Employees, City Attorney and City Manager.
Okay. Thank you. So then we're going to go into closed session and we'll be back for the opening ceremonies at six. And no public comments, right?
Yep.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. We're back from closed session, and Mr. City Attorney, any announcements out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. On item C1 of the closed session agenda, the City Council, by a unanimous vote, has directed the city attorney to initiate an action. The action, the defendants, and the other particulars shall, once unsealed, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the city's ability to effectuate service of process on one or more unserved parties, or that to do so would jeopardize its ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. And the council will be reconvening at the end of the open session business to complete the public employee annual performance evaluation of the city attorney, item C4.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, our next item is item D. This is opening ceremonies. Please help me salute our flag of the United States of America.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. Yes, for the record, I'd like to announce, Councilmember Basua joined the meeting at 5:08 PM. Councilmember Valenzuela joined the meeting at 5:11 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, then, our next item is ceremonial items, and my understanding that we have a presentation from the 2024 Ventura County Fair poster, and we have Ms. Mack, Ms. Mack, can you come, you want to come right up? Come right up.
Thank you.
Come right up to the dience.
Right here?
Yeah, over here to the, to the dience with us.
Oh.
Thank you, Mrs., okay, let me see. Mrs. Mack, can you hear me? Over, right over here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome. This is really, really great when we have somebody from the fairgrounds come over with a poster. And of course, do we have a winner of the, the painting, or?
She is not here, but, oh, okay, I, let me put this, I'll hold this, I'll hold this. So it's, I'm very excited to report that this is the 150th anniversary of the fair. And so our theme is Fair Ever Young. We had a youth poster contest, and 345 young people submitted. The winner is Stephanie Garcia, who is an 11th grader from Oxnard. Yay. She wasn't, so I don't know if I have, do I have a few minutes to just say a couple things? Oh, okay, so the fair, just reminding everybody, the fair is July 31st through August 11th. Doors open, gates open at noon, and it's going to have everything that you anticipate being at the fair, Mark Carnival, vendors, lots and lots of food. But as a fair board member, I have to remind people that the purpose of the fairgrounds is to serve as a community's central gathering place, where we come together to proudly celebrate our diversity and shared values. And how do we do that? Well, we have a junior live auction that has 400 animals. We are the largest and oldest fair auction in the state. We have dozens and dozens of volunteers who have been judging 10,000 entries in, you know, photographs, and gem and minerals, and flowers, and, and everything like that. Kids responded, the Kethroy kids responded really well to our read and ride contest, where you read four books and get six, six carnival tickets. And we have community groups, and this year we have an exhibit quality Chumash and Polynesian exhibit that's going to be in front of the Ag building. So that's all great, but I'm not even done. Okay? We have, we have a nightly drone show. We've got some terrific tribute bands on the 805 stage. There is a really fabulous lineup of headline acts that you can see free or go VIP. And of course, there is the rodeo the last weekend. So we're trying to make it as easy as we possibly can, go online, get your tickets. Around the fairgrounds, there's going to be lots of places to sit and relax, and take the stress off, take the shuttle that's going to be at the Oxnard Teen Pal Center. Yeah, and there's going to be bike valet or the bus, too. So I hope you will come and celebrate with us our Ventura County 150-year-old tradition. And thank you.
So, so, so we are going to have transportation from the transportation centers to the fair?
I understand it's at Oxnard, Oxnard Pal Center.
Oh, at the, at the Pal Center, at the, but didn't it one time have the train run from the transportation center to the fairgrounds?
The train will still be running.
A train will run, okay. Well, thank you so much, and, and, young man Garcia, young girl or a young man?
Stephanie Garcia.
Stephanie.
Yeah, we called her and she wasn't available.
Well, tell Stephanie we honor her and thank you for being here, and thank you on behalf of the City Council and the City of Oxnard. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So this is our copy, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is, we have Sea Frog, we have, let me see, who do we have here from Sea Frog? We have Haley, Dr. Haley, from Sea Frog. Come up, come on up, and bring your people here with you, too. So this is a commendation, climate first, replacing oil, gas, Sea Frog, 10th anniversary, whereas in 2013, a group of Ventura County residents became aware of the proposed oil drilling operations in their neighborhood, and became concerned about the health and environmental hazards. Whereas in 2014, Sea Frog established a nonprofit organization dedicated to monitoring oil, gas operations in Ventura County to advocate for the proper review and permitting monitoring and drilling operations, where Sea Frog serves the needs of the community by advocating for policies that protect the environment and public health, including promoting clean power, green jobs, and environmental justice. Where Sea Frog remain committed to this mission to advocate for the positive changes that promote the fossil-free future, raising awareness of most pressing social and economic environmental issues facing Ventura County. Now, therefore, City Council, City of Oxnard congratulates the climate first, replacing oil and gas for its 10th year anniversary, and advocate for protecting our environment and for, that looks forward to continued service to the residents of Ventura County. This is signed by the mayor of the City of Oxnard. Haley, will you?
That's me, yep.
Okay, now, I'll let you hold this.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I just have a few groups and people that we'd like to thank. So first, the city of Oxnard, the mayor and the council for often being a leader in climate and environmental justice issues. For example, just two months ago, passing a resolution committing, or pushing California to phase out fossil fuels and oil drilling in communities. So thank you for that leadership, and often being a leader for the rest of the cities and the county itself here in Ventura County. Also, of course, the community in Oxnard for the long and incredible history of organizing for community and economic well-being and justice, and the hundreds of Oxnard residents and youth who have come out and advocated for clean air, sustainable economies in the face of the fossil fuel industry over and over again. And lastly, the founders of Sea Frog, and everyone who has been a part of these incredible 10 years of grassroots climate justice action. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to share anything? No? Yes? Councilmember? You wanted to introduce a group?
More than, sure. So Sea Frog, or, oh, sorry, who's up here with me? I got it. So this is Abra Stewart, she's our program manager. This is Brooke Ballfaser, our community organizing manager, and this is Merrill Burgie, our board chair.
Apology.
And thank you so much. Put your hands together for the young people. This is with, you know, with climate change and a lot of things that are happening here and in the whole world for that matter, we have heat, well, you know, two degrees above normal, and floods and so forth. We thank you, young folks, and we're in good hands. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, and we're going to get a quick photo.
A quick photo? Okay, who wants to, okay. We need the password. Okay? Thanks, Ms. Ma, put your hands one more time for Sea Frog. Thank you for coming by. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Okay. Okay, our next item that we have here is a presentation of the All Housing Authority, Authority Education Scholarship Program. Mr. Ramirez, where is Mr. Ramirez? Who's making the presentation? Okay, there he is. You want to come up? Or you want to share from there? Okay, come on up. Do you have the recipients with you?
Thank you, Mayor, and council and audience. This year is the third year since we started a new program at the Housing Authority to encourage college attendance by students that live in public housing in Section 8. And we are preparing to award five new scholarships to students that are attending college from Oxnard College to a student that's going to Stanford. And we are going to make that award in a couple of weeks. We have already chosen the students. I could give you the names, but I wanted to be a surprise to them. But I, I did want to thank, acknowledge the city, the city council, the board commissioners for the investment in the students' education. That has been valid, it's a good, it's a good program that is up and running, so I appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
And once we get the recipients, we'll, we'll bring them over and congratulate them for that.
We will definitely introduce them, that's happening on August 9th.
9th.
I believe we're having a celebration, everybody's invited to attend, it's going to be at the, at, at the, at Opale. So we're having that celebration at that time.
And Mr. Ramirez, I had the opportunity to be with you the last year, and not only did they get a check, but they also got a laptop, correct?
Maybe I meant it too much. It's actually, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty proud of, of the team that they, the, the program that they put together. It's a, it's a $1,500 scholarship, it's a laptop, it's an internship, it's a paid internship, and it includes the supplies for the first year of college paper and ink and things like that.
You know what, Councilmember Basua says that they go to Disneyland also.
Whatever you donate, I'm willing to, to give away. Councilwoman, whatever you donate, I'm willing to give away.
Thank you, and again, you know, thank you for the program, and it's really, really good for the kids. Thank you so much for being here today. Okay, our next item, and this item is item F. This is public comments, not on the agenda, and we start off with, initially had some, Madam Clerk, we had a couple individuals that potentially got to be virtually, Jasmine? Is Jasmine?
Mayor Zaragoza, Jasmine is currently not available virtually or in person.
Okay, then, then the next person is Carla Alejandra. Is she available in?
Carla is also not available.
Not available? Okay, so then we have, potentially we have some people here in, in the council chambers.
Excuse me, Mayor Zaragoza?
Yes, ma'am.
We have one virtual speaker also.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Caller with phone number ending in 6377, can you press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Zaragoza, members of the city council, this is Manuel Herrera, Manuel Herrera, the creator of Citizens for a Better Oxnard, however, I'm here just representing myself. I noticed on the agenda under closed session, you're going to evaluate the performance of the city manager. Although I know the, a city employee, their evaluations are, for the most part, private, but the fact that he's a city manager that represents the entire city, I'm wondering at some point, will the city council give the results of the evaluation? So is the city manager doing a good job? Is he, is he getting a B minus? Is he getting an A? Is he barely making it by getting a D minus? I mean, you know, the city manager reports to the city council, but he also reports to the people of Oxnard. So again, just want to know, I think we have the right to know how he's doing, so at some point, I'm just wondering if there'll be any kind of public statement or anything regarding his performance. Now, I, I recently saw a photo that was, of him, that was taken maybe a few months after he was hired, and his hair was basically jet black, and you look at him now, and it's all white, kind of like my hair. Must be the stress of the job, right? So, so that got me wondering, you know, how, how does he relieve stress? I mean, after all, I did push you guys to take away his gym membership, so I don't know, should we give it back to him, or, I don't know. But anyways, those are my comments. I want to know how he's doing, if, what you guys can say about that. Do we need a new city manager? Is this one doing a good job? I mean, what's going on? So anyways, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny, because, you know, he's only running. Thank you, Manny, because, you know, he's only running almost 2,000 employees and 200-plus thousand people here in the City of Oxnard, and we'll have something later on, on behalf of the city manager and the city attorney. Thank you for that. Gabby Renteria, followed by, I'm sorry, any other virtual?
Mayor Zaragoza, there's no additional virtual speakers.
Thank you. So we have Gabby Renteria, followed by Jessie Ramirez. Gab, Gabby? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Councilmembers, Gabby Renteria here. Can I put this down? Sure, here, I'm short. Hi, Rose. So we were here a couple weeks ago, and we are here representing our, our boys. They play soccer, age group 14U. They play for a club by the name of Oxnard FC. And just a little rundown of what our experience has been, they came champions from a regional championship that was held in Hawaii. And because they won that, that tournament, they were invited to play in Orlando for a national tournament. That's coming up. They're actually getting ready to leave. I believe some of them are leaving on Saturday, some of them are leaving on Sunday, and they will be out there next week. And so we're here, basically gonna share a little bit about our fundraising efforts. We came a couple weeks ago needing about 30, $37,000 to get these trip, these kids to Orlando and to play soccer. And we have been granted some money by the Port of Huinimi. We have, you know, we had a pasta dinner last night at Downtown Cafe. That was a great turnout as well. We are also pending some money from Oaks FC. So we also have a GoFund account. We have about $2,000 there. In, in a nutshell, we still need about, I wouldn't say about $8,000 to get these kids out there. And so we're basically here as parents, trying to encourage our community, because these boys are very hardworking boys, they are amazing soccer players, and as parents, I think that our main objective should be our, you know, for our kids to continue going to school and stay out of the streets of Oxnard. We're trying our very best to raise good, respectful, you know, children, and so I think this is a good cause. I think they, these boys are doing an amazing job representing, representing our community, representing Oxnard, Ventura County. And so I think that's kinda where we're at. Did you have anything to add to that? Just any, anybody that would like?
Use the mic, Mia. Go, use the mic.
Oh, use the mic. Anybody that would like to sponsor or help us even more with the GoFundMe, GoFundMe page, it would be awesome. They're under Oxnard FC National in Orlando, Florida, and it would help tremendously. Thank you.
And I know you have a GoFundMe program going.
Yes, thank you so much for your donation.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Jess Ramirez, followed by Esperanza Andrade.
Esperanza already spoke.
Okay. Esperanza was also.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, gentlemen, Madam Basua. Good news and bad news. The bad news is that we haven't received any money from any corporations around the area, okay? So somehow, no one has made those phone calls, important calls that we need to make. So I was talking to this two parents here and said, you know, did you ever thought you would have to be doing this, going to the City Council? I said, never in a million years. All they did was to have their kids play soccer, and they were good. And they're now their champions of the whole western region of the United States. So this is about doing fundraising, pasta dinners, it's, it's a total new world for them. But it's not for me, because I've done it for so many years for different organizations. But I wanted to bring you back here, so give you an update, you know, we're, we're working like hell to get, you know, get them, get, get them there, and we're gonna get them there, okay? So is the City Council prepared when those kids come back as champions of the whole, whole United States? Are we gonna have a parade for them? I mean, what are we gonna do when they come back as champions? Because these kids are so good that they will, they will come back as champions, okay? Now, the port is prepared to do some facility for them regardless of whether they win number one or not. But the fact that they even went up to where they are now, going to Florida, that's, that's very impressive. And that, they mixed the job easier for our police officers here, because these are, these kids will never get in trouble. So basically, we're preventing juvenile delinquency out there in the streets. And I have great admiration for parents and coaches who have given all their time of keep, keeping our kids out of, out of the streets and keeping them in the, what impressed me the most is when one of the parents went to the port and they told us, you know what, if we hadn't been for this team, my two kids would be dead. And I believe that, because being involved in organized sports just keeps, keeps them sane, keeps them happy, and, and gives them a positive attitude. So, so please, we still need $8,000, and obviously, if we don't get the money, and this, this address message is for the parents out there who are watching this at home, that we need their money, where they can give us $2, $3, $5, $10, that's what really matter. But we need, we need to send this, this boys to Orlando. If we don't raise the money, they have to put on their credit cards, and we'll do another pasta dinner when they come back. But that's, that shouldn't be necessary, because I know that we have a great community here in Oxnard, and we can get it done. So thank you. Have a listen.
Thank you, Jess. Okay, then we have Kami, Kami, Kami Pincar, followed by Juana Flores.
Good evening, Mayor Zaragoza and Councilmembers. My name's Kami Pinzek. I am the 2024 President of the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors. We are a professional membership, representing over 2,000 real estate and housing professionals across West Ventura County. Yes, we sell houses, but we also advocate for private property rights and homeownership. And I am excited to be here with you tonight to launch a new outreach program from our association, to better inform our community and decision-makers like yourselves. We have put together a market update report program to be presented on a quarterly basis at each of the seven cities in West Ventura County. We are excited to share this program here in Oxnard this evening and hope we can provide meaningful insight into the current housing market and the policies that shape it. Our report features in-depth analysis of the California housing crisis, Oxnard-specific demographic data, and current state and local housing statistics. We have given this report to the city clerk, and it, don't worry, it, it looked, might look a little scary, but we are very visual as Realtors, and there are lots of really, really useful graphs in there. These reports will evolve over time. For instance, we're planning to add year-over-year comparisons and rental market information on the next quarter's report. Over time, our goal is to tell the story of a changing Oxnard housing market and equip consumers and policymakers to make the best possible decisions. To build the most effective reports, we welcome your feedback, and we encourage the city to make these reports available to the general public. Our June report shows a very tight housing market across the western part of the county. I know that doesn't come as a surprise, particularly in Oxnard with just three months' supply of inventory available. A normal market is six months. Properties are only seeing an average of 21 days before an offer is accepted, and the reduced supply is contributing to higher prices with a median sales price of $825,000. We applaud the city's effort to increase housing stock and acknowledge more needs to be done to ensure all Oxnard residents have access to housing they can afford. It can't be underestimated the importance of homeownership to the character and stability of community. Additionally, it is statistically proven in providing generational wealth for families. We know that communities with higher rates of homeownership have higher property values, can offer a wider range of services and amenities, and often have less crimes. We look forward to working with the city and other stakeholders to create a policy environment that creates housing opportunities for everyone.
Thank you, Kami.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Giovanna Flores, followed by Bethenia Reese. Giovanna Flores? Or Mr. Reese or Mrs. Reese? Come on down.
Hi. Hello, my name is Alex Suarez. I am a youth member from the Boys and Girls Club HHS Teen Center on 126 East 7th Street, and we wanted to suggest transforming the empty field in front of the teen center, which is lot 131, into a park for the community. We understand the housing department has plans to turn this location out into affordable housing, but we think it would be more suitable for a park instead. This park can keep our community area more physically active, decrease stress to promote mental health, and provide a playground for family connection. The Boys and Girls Club provides a safe place for youths to go after school, and sports is a huge part of that, but we currently do not have a grassy area to do our sports. We have to play them inside. The public will benefit from this free space to take their families and exercise and relieve stress. We would like to, we would like this discussion to be placed on the agenda for the next City Council meeting. The public should know what this lot will be turned into, and we would want the community to have a say. Although affordable housing is needed, we do not believe that this is the right location. It will increase traffic and possibly cause frequent accidents due to it being a smaller area. We have also been aware that due to Amazon being placed here, there is a surplus of money that could be used to make a park instead. Thank you for letting me voice my concern, and I hope you will consider this idea to be placed on the agenda for the next City Council meeting.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you. Okay. You know, Normie would unlock clapping, but I think Alex did a good job. Thank you so much. Okay, Giovanna Flores Santayan? Or, or Miss Reese? Go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Giovani Flores, and I am here with the Kindness Club of the Boys and Girls Club of Oxford Port Huinimi HHS Teen Center. I am here to propose a vision for our community that embraces both growth and quality of life by transforming the vacant lot 131, currently a locator for affordable housing, into a community park. Firstly, parks are the heartbeat of any community. They provide a communal space where families, friends, and neighbors can come together, fostering a sense of unity and belonging. Imagine a place where children can play safely, adults can enjoy walks, and seniors can find a peaceful spot to relax. This park would not only serve as a recreational area, but also as a help for social interactions and strengthening the bonds between PR community. Secondly, the environmental benefits of a park cannot be overstated. Green spaces play a crucial role in improving air quality, reducing urban heat, and supporting local biodiversity. A park is essential for reducing stress and enhancing overall happiness. Lastly, a park can be a versatile space that adapts to the needs of our diverse community. Investing in a park is an investment in the future, providing a multifunctional space that will benefit generations. In conclusion, while the need for housing is undeniable, the creation of a community park offers profound and lasting benefits that can elevate our city. I urge you to consider this proposal and envision a future where our community thrives, not just through development, but through shared joy and well-being that a park can bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Alasia Reese.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Elitia Ruiz. I'm from the Boys and Girls Club on 126 East 7th Street, and I'm wondering if you can please consider putting our park idea on the agenda for the next council meeting. This would mean a lot to the community and myself. In my opinion, I think, I think it's, it's not a great location for affordable housing. Not only is, is it not a good location, but we're, we're gonna have a lot more traffic in the community, and it's already crowded as is. The renters would most likely use the parking lot next to it, which is already used by the Clinicas, the Sachi Market, Arco, and the other housing, also the teen center. Lastly, the, the park is just a good thing for the kids in the community, such as the teen center, the kids in the other housing, and the kids from the schools around the area. Thank you for, um, listening to me. Also, I want to show you the, the board we made.
Raise it up somewhere so the cameras can see it. Okay.
It showed.
Thank you. That's over on 7th Street, right?
Yeah. It shows the, the Boys and Girls Club, the gas station, the Sachi Market, oh, oh, a restaurant, the other housing, the, the Clinicas, and it's just like, it's, it's just a bunch of like places, and it's like we all use the same parking area, and we use like the parking area here, which is already crowded, and I feel like if we do housing right here, it's just, it's just gonna crowd it up, and there's gonna be no space.
Thank you so much. So you got an A in your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No more clapping. All righty, any other speakers, Madam Clerk, on this item on the agenda?
Mayor Zaragoza, there's no additional speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Okay, normally, Councilor, we don't say anything, but go ahead, and you wanna share a couple of words on items on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, and just so folks know, we can't go into discussion because of the Brown Act, but I just wanted to ask if our city manager and our housing director wouldn't mind connecting with the Kindness Club from 7th Street to talk a little bit about that site in particular, some of the history of it, the plans, and then also additional plans that are in the way for park, a park or parklet in the area. So we don't have to get into discussion now, but if you wouldn't mind connecting with the group to have that discussion.
Mr. Ramirez, 25 words or less.
Definitely will do that. I was just talking to Steph about exactly that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will do that, and I wanna address the, the speakers from the Boys and Girls Club. So we're not able to put it on the very next council agenda. The agenda system doesn't work that way, but after you meet with Mr. Ramirez, we'll consider it for the early fall. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So no other speakers on this item, on the agenda?
That's correct, Mayor Zaragoza.
Thank you. Okay, our next item's Item F, excuse me, Item G. This is a report of the city manager, and, and we have, number one, the Public Works Department, the continuation of the emergency order for replacing the city's data center, cooling center, and who, Michael?
Yeah, we, that's a continuing item, but we do need your action on that real quick, and then I have an update after this.
Okay, so the, so we make a motion on that to start off? Need a motion, this item?
So moved.
Motion by, Councilor Pereira, second by, Councilman Basua. Please vote.
Are there any speakers on this?
I'm gonna share that right after that.
Mayor Zaragoza, there's no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Thank you, please vote.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I will need to do a verbal vote. Councilmember Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Councilmember Pereira?
Yes.
Councilmember Turan?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Aye.
Mayor Portem McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Zaragoza?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 7 to 0.
Okay, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Hopefully, that'll be the end of it. Okay, now for, for fireworks. Obviously, we've just gotten through July 4th, and as usual, many, many people are rightfully concerned about the level of fireworks, so I'm gonna have the police chief give a brief update, and then afterwards, I'll, I'll, well, we'll see if, what the conversation is. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm backed by popular demand, Diego, if you wouldn't mind popping the slideshow up for me. Starting with, I would like to spend the next few minutes giving you a recap. Every year, this seems to happen where we, our public wants to know what actually happened with our fireworks efforts and our fireworks mitigation efforts. I wanna go back, I've done this a number of times, and so I'm trying to avoid sounding the same every year. Over the years, I've mentioned that fireworks have, go back to the, the origin of the United States, and I've said that fireworks to many people in the United States is part of American culture, and one of the neighborhood chairpersons kinda came after me about that. And the reason why I bring that up is because John Adams actually said this of Independence Day, that these, moving forward, you can see that it's is part of American culture, and one of the neighborhood chairpersons kind of came after me about that, and the reason why I bring that up is because John Adams actually said this of Independence Day, that, uh, these, moving forward, you can see that it's part of what people have adopted. Now, with that said, moving forward, there are the, the traditional reality of fireworks. Now, we live in a, a country where the population's much more dense, there are a lot more people here, their fireworks are so readily available to everybody, people overdo it, and that's the easiest way to, to put that. Um, it's extensive. It is across the nation, it's across the state, it's not just in Oxnard. It's ongoing, it's widespread, um, it disturbs pers, the personal peace of our residents and our community members. Animals, people, uh, in general, are negatively affected by this, and it's the inconsiderate use of this type of, uh, this type of materials that really causes a very big issue. This is actually one of the biggest issues that, uh, our department has to wrestle with every year. It's a fire risk. We're in times where fire danger is very high, but yet the fireworks activity does continue. And of course, we've talked about fatalities in our city, uh, back in 2019 from fireworks, and injury risks that do, are inherent to that. About 2,000 children per year are actually injured by fireworks on the Fourth of July, so that is the other side of the equation. Moving forward, I want to talk about this, is that the fireworks, I'll just say, use the term loosely, peak season tends to be between Memorial Day and the Fourth of July. Now, I, we will recognize, we do get fireworks complaints throughout the entire year, but generally, after the Fourth, they taper down to single digits, and throughout the rest of the year, they're usually in single-digit or very low two-digit numbers. This trend shows that period that we consider to be peak season, and this is kind of where we're going. It's leveled off again to the pre-COVID levels. One thing to note here, too, is that on the dates, on the years that I show, I always indicate what day of the year, what day of the week the Fourth of July is actually on, but this is where we're at as of this year. Looking at this one, this is, tells us that on the actual Fourth of July, we got over 1,100 phone calls into our emergency communication center, and to give you some context, on an average day, we get about 700 to 760 calls into the center. So we're fully staffed, we had five call takers working, they were taking dozens of calls over, uh, the Fourth of July, but especially between the hours of 8:00 PM and 11:00, where they were getting, uh, probably about 35 calls, uh, well, so many calls that we had about 50 to 60 calls pending in our, our queue. All calls for service on the Fourth of July, and every police chief that I know tells their council that this is generally the busiest day of the year. And so this year, we had 778 calls for service, and these are calls that we had to respond to. Now, typically during a given day, we will respond to a, a little over 300 calls per service, and so the Fourth of July reflects that. But the bottom line, the 340 number, shows how that, how fireworks actually impact that number. So, very busy day, as we've said, we do a lot of things in advance of this date. Um, it's not just the Fourth of July when we're out enforcing. So first of all, I will like to thank the Fire Department as well as Code Compliance, they have been, uh, great partners with us for the past four or five years. Um, Fire has really taken it to new heights, um, and we really appreciate the teamwork on this. Leading up to this season, we do a number of news releases, uh, social media outreach, especially about, uh, fire safety as well as about, uh, animal safety, because a lot of pets, July 5th is actually where people find a lot of their pets have run away, uh, because of panic. We opened a tip line, and I'll mention that we took about 340 tips from our community members, either by email or by phone, which are reviewed in that season leading up to the Fourth, and I'll show you what we do with that. Um, we do issue warning letters to locations that have been specifically identified. Whether we have seen it or not, if a neighbor reports a particular neighbor, we, we send these letters, and we sent about 61 of these letters this year. Um, you may have seen the message trailers across the city pushing that, um, as well as pre-holiday deployments. So we don't just wait until the Fourth. We actually, uh, Mayor, you have a question?
Yeah, Chief, I, I just want to, before you leave this slide, I think it's important that we share this information, because I had calls from individuals saying that the city didn't do anything, there was no media, there was no tips, there was no warning letters, there's nothing, a, and so they, was just, why? But you can see all the things that we've done here. I just wanted, before you leave that slide, you know how important it is?
Yes, sir.
All the information that we give out for the fireworks, you know, to protect our animals and our people and so forth. I just wanted to share that.
Well, you'll do that, and it's part of the ongoing narrative. We do have people that say that we do hear the term war zone, we do hear the term worst year, worst year ever, uh, used continually every year. We've heard that, uh, you know, I'll get to this later, but why can't the police solve this problem? Um, they're ineffective. I'll talk a little bit more of that in my closing. But, um, leading up to the holiday, we did six pre-holiday deployments. So we put officers out that are outside of the, the first responder group, and we put drones up, we go look for these areas, and we issue citations up to the holiday as well. And then on the Fourth of July, we have what we call enhanced staffing, so pretty much anybody that is available to work will work that day, and so on that day, I believe we had over 88 sworn officers working on that day. So we also wanted to make sure that people are aware of the tip lines, so I think even in the City Manager's reports in the past weeks, we did see this information put out to the public. But what we do is we take the information that we receive from the tips and the complaints, and we actually map them into areas where we believe the highest probability of success in deploying our limited resources will work. And so this is, gives you an example of what it looked like during this fireworks season, and you can see where it gets pretty heavy. We also had one of the biggest, uh, fireworks seizures, uh, that I have seen in quite some time. Um, this here is a, almost a 1,500 pounds, so three-quarters of a ton of fireworks were intercepted by the police and fire departments, and the person was arrested for that. We did this year, actually, in total, just come shy of seizing a total of one ton of illegal fireworks this year. We tried something new this year. Um, we actually tried a fixed wing aircraft deployment that is actually capable of identifying the parcels where the fireworks are originating from and videotaping them for the purpose of later mailing citations. We've yet to see how this will play out. Uh, we are still assessing the number of, uh, potential citations that can come out of this, but it was, it's definitely worth a try in seeing how effective this could be. And these are a lot of numbers. I know I've spoken to a number of them, uh, already, but during the, I'll just point out some of the more, um, poignant ones here, is that during this fireworks season, we issued 56 citations, uh, to various people in our community, up to $1,000. And people ask, why don't you, uh, why aren't the fines higher? Well, those are the fines that are, that is, that are permissible by existing law, so that's the highest fine we can levy. We did, we were aware of one injury that took place. It was a fall that took place to, next to an exploding firework, um, so that did happen. And the Fire Department did respond to about two dozen various calls related to either small fires or, uh, concerns about fire. This year also, we, of note, we had, um, about 15,000 people at the harbor this year, so that really also takes a big, uh, a large amount of resources that are dedicated to the events that start early that morning, including a 5K race, all the way through the main event, so a lot of our resources are tied up at the harbor for the day, in hopes of people having a good time, and hopefully getting people to, uh, not engage in illegal firework use near their homes. Go to the harbor, it's a great place to see it. So, in closing, I just wanted to put out there that there are things that, uh, that, Mayor, you mentioned the comments that are made about fireworks, about how we don't do anything and how we're ineffective at the problem, but I will continue to assert that the problem is so widespread that there are literally tens of thousands of firework uses in the city on the Fourth of July, and even if we had all 200 officers working that day, there are a lot of considerations that, that's just not a feasible, uh, effort. The, the return on the investment is not there. We live in a, a, a country that has fireworks that are readily available. People can go to neighboring cities and buy them, they can go across state lines and buy them, they can order them on the internet and buy them, so they're very readily available. We have our limitations in how we enforce, we have to stay within the parameters of the law. Um, we have to actually be able to prove a case before we issue a citation. So, other than that, I think, um, one message that goes out to our community is, the best we can do is we can ask, we can try to do as much outreach, and we can try to get people to comply with the law and not do this, or do this, um, well, not, not do this at all, actually, in Oxnard, go to the shows, but to go out there, to think that we can go out there and eliminate the problem is simply just not, doesn't intersect with, with what is reasonable. And so this problem is everywhere, and a lot of police chiefs go up in front of their city councils the week after the Fourth to tell us about, tell them about what we did. And, uh, I will say that, I will say this assertively, that the Oxnard Police Department, given the resources that we have and the size of this city, we can expect a, a good volume of fireworks, but we do more, we put out a pretty solid effort every year, it doesn't solve the problem, but it does apply consequences to those people that we catch. So I will say that we do more than many cities our size.
Thank you. Before I go to Consul Men Turan, I, my understanding that between Ventura, Oxnard, Wine Eme, Camrio, there's about 400 plus thousand people, that, that I think it's extremely important that people understand with the amount of, with the minimal amount of officers that we have, you know, we still cover quite a bit of ground, and, and it really, really works out, uh, to the benefit or the safety of the community.
That's correct.
So you want one more before we go to Consul Men? Go ahead.
Yeah, two more pieces. So Diego, could you put up the, uh, the next set, please? So I want to share and add to this, because, um, I understand the, the ultimate frustration with all of this, but the, the information that people are putting out, uh, with regard to, um, the nature of the problem and the fact that the, um, city and specifically the Police Department don't want to address this is, 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 is so outrageously wrong, um, that it's almost silly. So this is, please indulge us, this is only a three-minute news clip. Uh, don't be mesmerized by the fireworks, because that's what it's about. Listen to what the newscasters are actually saying. Uh, Diego, can you hit play?
Because there is another show from SkyCal, and these are the illegal fireworks that are all across Southern California.
And KCal's Desmond Shaw is live in SkyCal with a bird's eye view of this show. Des?
Well, Juan and Pat, you know, I fly Fourth of July pretty much every year, and it never ceases to amaze me what we see up here. This is just one little sliver of it here, as we're looking across Boyle Heights and East LA, and to my knowledge, pretty much all of these are illegal fireworks. There may be a couple of designated, the professional displays down there, but it is just so insane to see, you know, really all across the LA basin and into the San Gabriel Valley, as we pan over towards, uh, Montebello. I would show you South LA here, I'll show you in a second, but the, the crazy thing about South LA is there are so many fireworks going off that it's hard to even see them right now, as I pan west, there's downtown LA in the distance, but we have fog, and now we also kind of have this layer of, uh, residual firework, residue here. Uh, you see, you can still see all the fireworks going off here in South LA. It's such an insane thing to see, and what's crazy is this is sustained for two or three hours, from like, 8:30 until midnight, so yeah, maybe like, three, three and a half hours. I wish there was a way that we could count, excuse me, just how many fireworks are going off in Southern California tonight, because it is just an amazing thing to see, and again, 95% of what you're seeing is all illegal right now. We're waiting to see if Dodger Stadium's gonna have any fireworks going off here. Uh, they should be pretty soon, uh, and then of course, we've got the Rose Bowl happening, which we're hoping to see some of that, that's, uh, the largest fireworks display on the West Coast, but, you know, where do they all come from? Nevada, Arizona, Mexico? I'm not sure, but it's an amazing thing to see, Pat and Juan, that's for sure.
And this is something that I was trying to, we were telling Danny about, to, to see this every year, and Des, you know, just have to ask you this question, how does this impact you and the chopper?
Fortunately for us, you know, we don't try to get down at any kind of low level. In fact, right now, we're over the Commerce Train Yard, one of the few places where I know we can hover safely without any worry about, uh, fireworks coming down into SkyCal's belly. Uh, so, you know, we've been doing this for many years, we, we keep a pretty safe distance. Uh, the thing we're actually worried the most about is drones right now. We had kind of a close call with a drone earlier that was flying way too high, but fortunately, we're usually much higher than these fireworks.
And imagine flying into LAX tonight and seeing this show down below as you're, you're making your way here.
Are they doing fireworks all over the city? Yeah, they are, but they're not what you think, it's not the professional. And you know what, Des? I mean, looking, these, you know, they've gotten really good in terms, when I say good, I mean, they look professional. There's huge a lot of them.
Yeah, they are. Yeah. They're impressive fireworks, and I, I know they're not cheap, so, uh, boy, they may be illegal, but Southern California obviously loves their fireworks, and they must be spending a lot of money on them.
We can see it right there. All right, Desmond, thank you very much.
Thanks. Diego, the next, or the final slide, please.
Because there is another show.
As the chief, um, pointed out, this is a problem that, uh, is certainly not unique to Oxnard, which is why it's frustrating for me to hear when people are frustrated, they think it's an Oxnard problem. So here is where you can buy fireworks in the country. So all the blue states are where you can get all the fireworks, the yellow states have limited fireworks, and the irony is, there's only one state where you cannot, and that's Massachusetts. That's where John Adams was born. What the heck? Braintree, Mass. is where he was born, but the only sensible state right now is Massachusetts. So I hate to say it, but the, it's fireworks is, as American as apple pie in baseball, um, it is, it is very difficult for us to deal with. Uh, every year, we, we approach it and, and we do everything we can, but make no mistake about this, it is, this is not about Oxnard. So I want to share that map with you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, you know, and thank, of course, you know, our Fire Chief, too, and, uh, so we have a co, a couple of council members that like to share some information. We'll start off with Consul Men Turan, and then followed by Consul Perallo.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for the update, and I recognize it was, um, you know, just a quick update for the public on that, because a number of questions have come in from, uh, members of the public, and I just wanted to take a moment, and actually, the video that was brought up, uh, I think is a really nice, uh, point, to my point. We've had a number of emails come from members of the public who, as you stated, um, share that they have a perception that nothing's being done, or the Oxnard PD turns a blind eye to it, uh, or turns away from it, and, you know, I've, uh, respectfully asked of some of these folks, well, can you share with me what other cities our size have done successfully to mitigate or completely eliminate fireworks? And to this point, I haven't had any takers on that. Um, I'll let you know if I do hear that, but I'll put it out there right now for everybody listening. Um, if you know of another city who has eliminated the fireworks issue, or has all their community members happy with the level of fireworks that happens around this time of year, um, I absolutely would love to sit down with you and hear what those things were that they did, what policies they passed, and what was able to be done, given the resources that that city had to get to that point. So I absolutely encourage that, um, that conversation, and again, the video was just,
It was telling.
It was telling, for sure, and again, this is not an Oxnard unique issue. You, that was all of the Southern California basin that the helicopter was seeing, and it was just non-stop, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Perallo?
Thank you very much for the presentation, Chief. Compliments to the city staff for coming up with the idea of using the airplane. It may work out, may not work out, but you're trying something. You're trying to appease the people that are raising cane in the city of Oxnard because of the illegal fireworks. In my own mind, this was not as bad as past years. I can recall years past, but I would like to know, can you show the hotspots where you showed fireworks were? Because I did attend a house at the beach, and Mandalay Beach Road lit up like Christmas trees. I don't know if they can show it again, and if not, can you also give the hotline number? I just had an email before the meeting started for a lady that lives at Channel Islands Harbor. She's got a Great Dane that's medicated, and there is a guy with, uh, no concern or consideration who's lighting cherry bombs, and this Great Dane is going absolutely nuts.
Yeah, the hotline number is on one, it's on the, I believe it's on the preceding slide. If you want to show that first.
It's right there.
It's right there. Oh, there it is.
39458.
Um, also, yeah, this is the map, and this is based on just the density of reporting parties for complaining about fireworks, or people providing tips or information about fireworks, so that's, that's a collective, I believe it's about a five or a six-week picture of, of what's going on, and you can see where the most activity is. Uh, I will say, places at the beach, a lot of the neighbors go out there and have the parties out there where they have professional grade, but it, we do get complaints from that area, but as you can see, the, the density of those complaints is not as significant as elsewhere.
Yep.
Thank you, Consul.
I can tell you that, from looking at this again, the people that were complaining and raising holy hell at the beach, they're lucky they don't live in some of the other areas, this list. You got, you guys are doing a hell of a job.
Thank you. I would like to thank the staff that's working on, or dispatchers, or officers that are out there every day, they're, they're working long days, and it's a very, very busy day for them, and, and having listened to the phone calls of what, uh, they, dear, when people call in, they're usually very upset, um, and so I want to thank them.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks your staff for an excellent job. Thank you so much for the presentation. Okay, our next item is item H, and this is the city council members that might have, and the brief announcements that they might like to share or also place any items for future agendas in three minutes. And we'll start off with Councilman Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to first start off my report. I had the opportunity to support our recreational, cultural and community services staff the past few days. First, I was able to stop by the Kids Fest at the Oxnard Pal to see the large amount of youth and their parents, you know, enjoying the festivities. And just earlier today, I was able to join our staff and volunteers at the South Winds Youth Center for a backpack distribution. Also, this past Thursday, I was able to join a community advisor committee with SeaFrog. The Port of Weneme received a grant for, from the EPA for air quality monitors that will detect the amount of black carbon in the greater Oxnard area, but you know, looking forward to see how that plays out in the coming future. And this past Saturday, I attended the, an event at Oxnard College hosted by the Coalition of Family Harmony for an LGBTQ plus wellness event. Highly attended, plenty of folks out there. And tomorrow night, District Six will be having a neighborhood council for all eight neighborhoods at the South Oxnard Center at 6:30 PM. So looking forward to engaging several South Oxnard residents tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Perillo.
Thank you. Had the opportunity today to attend a water conference where they bring updates on the specific topic was the tunnel through the Santa Susana Mountains for the Cuyegus. Extremely impressive. Until you see something like that and they explain just how much water it carries and what would happen if there was a major disaster, earthquake specifically, it sort of goes over everyone's head. I want to just make a comment with respect to the young people and a credit to them asking about the park, the Boys and Girls Club. I recall sitting in the audience as a member of the public when the Samuel Boys and Girls Club had a terrific athletic field and that there was a decision made by past councils, probably a couple decades ago, to do away with the athletic field and build housing. This, I think, falls into something called unintended consequences. There's a tremendous amount of people there and they have a desired need. I don't know what the city can do specifically. I'm not taking a position on that. With, with respect to the water, there are issues that will be coming forward that people need to realize. The world is changing, whether you believe in climate change or not, the world is changing. From drought to some tremendous amounts of water. I still, in my district that I represent, have people washing down their driveways. I mean, it's insane. And it's, you know, they got a push broom, there's a, you know, a little maybe extra labor. And some of the people have an attitude, well, you know, I'll pay the bill. It's a precious resource and I wish more people would understand that. And along with that, I want to give a kudo to all the people that work for the city of Oxnard's Waste Department, the people that work for 311 and pick up the garbage that is dumped throughout the city of Oxnard. I would challenge any member of the public to drive through various neighborhoods, north, south, east, west. And when you see a pickup truck with a bunch of furniture that doesn't look like it's in a moving state, or mattresses, or television sets, just in your own mind, just figure out what you saw and come back the next day and see if it's still there. I believe that stuff, our neighbors, our own neighbors are the ones that are dumping it in sites. We're doing such a tremendous job of picking it up every day with the 311 calls. It's getting to be routine, matter of fact. That has to change. It's a cost to the city of Oxnard. It's a tremendous cost to the city of Oxnard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday was my Los An meeting day and we met at L, Los Angeles Metro Transportation Agency building right next to Union Station, which pretty much wipes out the whole day getting down there, meeting and getting home. But I was able to attend the Kamala Neighborhood Regeneration of their Neighborhood Council and it was a good group of folks that were there, city staff was present. And I'm really excited to see one of the Neighborhood Council groups that had been dormant for many years now coming back online. So I, I, all in all, it was a good day. It was a long day, but it was a good day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Basua.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to wish my son Nathan a happy 21st birthday.
Oh.
You know, I, it's his birthday, but I did request presents for myself.
Thank you.
But yes, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Basu.
Nothing this time.
Councilman Turan. Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to give some thanks to the Fremont South Neighborhood Council, to the residents and to their Chair, Kim Winch, and their Executive Board, who all were re-elected in their election meeting just this past Wednesday. I would also like to thank the staff who came out to present at this meeting. We had our folks from Traffic Engineering, from Oxnard PD and Community Development, Community Development Director presented as well, and folks from Public Works. And I know that they had set up the room for 50 chairs, five zero, and they were bringing in extra chairs because they had run out and it was a really well-attended meeting. They had some really good discussion about parking and challenges of parking. And again, I appreciate staff's effort in framing that conversation and providing some very realistic information and expectations for the residents on how they can address this in a number of different ways. And it's up to them ultimately as a council to decide what they'd like to do next. I also want to thank all of the staff who have been working in environmental resources on lid and container replacement in District Two. I've been having a focus on that for the last couple of weeks here. And I think at our last meeting in my comments here, I'll give a little quick update with some numbers, but I appreciate the work that's happened on that from all the staff. I also want to thank, as Councilmember Perillo did, the young people and the staff from the Boys and Girls Club for coming out tonight and voicing their thoughts and their concerns on that item that they brought forward. And again, thank you to Mr. Ramírez from our Housing Department for being willing to connect with them and discuss the item more in detail and perhaps from there, they may be able to decide what their next course of action is as a group. And lastly, the city of Oxnard actually has a, a return this year for a summer internship program for high school students. And they're in various departments. I believe we have 28 students in high school who are interning at various departments throughout the city. And I wanted to thank our staff and those who are supervising them, as well as the Oxnard Union High School District staff who have helped to coordinate it. This past Friday, the mayor and I were able to be part of a day-long field trip that they did, traveling around the city, looking at different departments, understanding how the city functions. When they came here to council chambers, Mayor Saragosa explained a little bit about his history and what he does as mayor. And then I got to work with them on part of what council member does. But then we had a mock city council activity where some of them were the city council, some of them were supporting, some of them were opposing an item, a real scenario that this council had faced in the past, and they had to make a decision, an informed decision based on the information they had. So it was a lot of fun and I hope to continue the work as we go forward. But just wanted to acknowledge those who are working behind the scenes to coordinate their efforts as interns in the city and learning about their local government. And those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you. And I just want to add a little bit to that, we're in good hands with our youth, you know, they're really, really great youth. One of the things that I'd like to mention is our paving of Gonzalez Road, you know, I'm not sure if I heard the State of the City, but we are really, really doing it. They're really doing, first of all, let me back up. I want to thank Mr. Wolf, our Public Works Director and his staff for doing an excellent job by getting a lot of good comments on it. One of the things I mentioned in the State of the City is that it's just under construction and we have a lot of concerns from people, but they're good concerns because what happens with construction, we're going to complete it. And once we finish that, our PCI is going to be 100%. But I want to thank our Public Works Director, I was just, I was not going to share anything, but the council members just sat, gave me passes. Please thank our Public Works Director, our staff, our city manager for paving Gonzalez Road. And hopefully that we can continue after we finish the litigation that was horribly put upon us to complete the other, the other streets. So thank you, Mr. Wolf, Mr. City Manager, and all the Public Works staff for that. Thank you. Okay, council members, that's it. Our next item is item I, this is a review of the information consent, and we have 1, 2, 8 items. Do we have any speakers on consent, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Saragosa, we have no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Okay, Council, well, Councilman Turan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple disclosures and a recusal for our consent items. So we have three items that have to do with work with Ventura County. And just based on my day job and a professional relationship I have with the county of Ventura, two of these items are, I have no financial interest or it's not a disqualifying item, and that would be items five and six. For item seven, MOU with the District Attorney's Office, that I will have to recuse myself on. So just a disclosure about all of them, but I will recuse myself from seven.
On item seven?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other council members? Let me see, Councilman Perillo?
I'd like to address two, seven and eight.
Go ahead.
On item two, aside, an aside from what this is, it's a planning and zoning permit. It's a development, but under strategic priorities, this is something the city of Oxnard is trying to do. And Mr. Piquinelli, I'm not really going to ask a question, I just want to make a point here. Under strategic priorities, I'm going to quote it right out of the staff report, excellent staff report. This agenda item supports economic development strategy. The purpose of economic development strategy is to focus on the retention and expansion of Oxnard businesses by increasing the skills and employability of our local workforce, invite new business investments and target site-based redevelopment opportunities. I'd like to take the center gut right out of it. Increasing the skills and employability of our local workforce. This is what the city council, the city manager, and the direction we're trying to do with the Community College District. Give opportunities for the people in this district, this city, to take advantage of opportunities that are not offered at Oxnard College, to do exactly what this says, increase the skills and employability of our local workforce. Thank you. That's all my comment on that item. On number seven, continue.
Go ahead.
On number seven, this is, this one's a little touchy. The purpose of the item is a memorandum of understanding between the Ventura County District Attorney's Office to, for internet crimes against children investigations. These are some of the nastiest, dirtiest, most vile things that are going on. But my point in addressing this, we are being asked to work with the district attorney. We're being asked to help fund almost half a million dollars. We're being asked to help. We're being asked to assist. But we have asked the district attorney to help us with an apartment building where people are being taken advantage of and the district attorney has done nothing, in my opinion. Nothing. We've had numerous people come up here and ask their living conditions, quality conditions. It's the opportunity for the district attorney, instead of grandstanding, in my opinion, and photo opportunities, to do something. He's not doing something. I will support this because of the issue, but I do not support what our district attorney is doing to the city of Oxnard in other matters. That's my comment on seven.
Okay.
And number eight?
And number eight, go ahead.
I really want to thank the city, the people involved, the attorneys, thank you very much, police officers. I really want to thank the people for coming up on item eight. We have to, as city elected officials, protect the general fund and the rest of the residents in the city of Oxnard. We need to do this. And I'm grateful that we have minds that can clearly think of ways to do this. My hat's off to all of them. Thank you. Those are my only comments.
Thank you. Okay, so we have, need a motion on this item and then the Councilman Turan recuse himself from seven. The motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Perillo?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem. Rule call, man, or do we, is the, is it working now?
I will do a verbal.
Okay.
Councilmember Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Councilmember Perillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Turan, you are recusing from item K7. Would you like to vote on the remaining items?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Aye.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
We have the motion for consent items K1 through K8 with a recusal from Councilmember Turan on consent item K7. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item is a public hearing. This is item M1. And this is a time and place is set for a public hearing on item L1, Community Development Department, subject subdivision of a 3.69 acre lot into nine lots to permit individual use of proposed aid buildings on separate lots with a commonly owned parcel located at 1700 Solar Drive. The recommendation is the city council, one, conduct a public hearing. Two, find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act SEQA, Guideline Section 15332, in full development and through adopted resolution approving the planning and zoning permit number 22-300-02 for a tentative subdivision map tentative tract number 6078, subject to certain findings and conditions. We start off with a city clerk certification of publication and any written communication, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Saragosa, there was a legal notice for this public hearing, published in Nevada newspaper on July 4th, 2024. City clerk's office has not received any written communications on this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do any council members have any ex parte communications or other disclosures regarding this matter to state for the record? We'll start off with Valenzuela.
I did talk to one trustee from the Oxnard High School District because they have a property just adjacent to it, but they did, that was the only communication I had.
Councilman Perillo?
No, I do not.
Mayor Protem?
Nothing.
Nothing on my part? Basua?
No communication.
Turan?
No communications, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, members of the public are invited to sign up to speak on this item. And if this item is on the city's website, and any person who did not sign up may do so now by submitting a speaker card or following instructions posted on the agenda for this meeting at the city's website, oxnard.org/citymeetings. The contract planner, Kanika Pompe, posted a video presentation regarding this item and staffs are available to answer any questions or brief identifying questions council members may have before we take public testimony. The city council will deliberate after the public hearing has been closed. Do any council members have any concerns at this time?
I would just like to thank Mr. Pearson for getting back to me with the question I had and I would thank the staff for this item. Thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing testimony portion of this, of this hearing. Speakers have over three minutes to speak on this item. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
Mayor Saragosa, we do not have any public speakers in person or virtually for this item.
Okay, Joe, do you want to share anything, sign before we continue?
Yes, just quickly, Mayor and council members, I did want to note one small correction in the background section. We just note that the project site is east of Rice Avenue and it should be west of Rice Avenue, but the, the address and APN numbers on the report are correct.
So it should be east as opposed to west?
Yes, or should be west as opposed to east.
The other way around. Okay, thank you. All righty. Okay, if there's no speakers, Madam Clerk?
That is correct, Mayor Saragosa. We do not have any speakers for this public hearing.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Do any council members have any wish to make any comments at this time? Okay, if none, then do we need a first?
I move the recommended action.
Move by Valenzuela, second? I'll second. Second by Turan. Okay, rule call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Councilmember Perillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Turan?[1795.13] Councilmember Taran?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Aye.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Zaragoza?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you so much. Our next item is M one, reports. This is the city attorney department, and this is introduction of omnibus city code updates. Recommendation, the city council introduce and waive any further readings of this ordinance titled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oxnard, Amending the Various Sections of the Oxnard City Code to Regulate Election Signs, Modify Subdivision Map Act, Signature Requirements, and Amend Short-Term Rental Notice Requirements and Strengthen Rent Stabilization and Just Cause Eviction Notices, Regulations." And again, this is a pre-recorded item for measure M. And do we have Mr. Fisher, if we have any, any additional comments, Mr. Fisher, our city attorney?
Deputy City Attorney Jason Zaragoza is here to answer any questions you have. He put this together for you and is ready for your questions.
Jason, any additional comments you might want to share with us?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. No additional comments on the specifics of the ordinance other than what's in the presentation, but if you recall, a couple of years ago, the city attorney indicated to you all that we would periodically present you with city code updates in this format. Some of them are clerical in nature, some of them are updates to comply with state law, others would be more substantive in nature based upon staff feedback that we've received to strengthen existing regulations, and that's what this, that's what this ordinance before you is.
Thank you, Mr. Zaragoza. Any additional information, we have Councilman Parello?
Yes, Mr. Zaragoza, thank you very much, City Attorney's Office. Thank you for this. I represent an area in Oxnard, Oxnard Shores. They have a tremendous amount of short-term rentals. For those that are watching and may not be aware, can you just address what this involves and what the impact is with short-term rentals, updates, takeaways that they can get? I appreciate it greatly, and I'm sure those residents would.
Sure. Councilmember Parello, so currently, the planning division provides a mailed notice of a permit issuance for an STR to properties within 300-foot radius of those that would maybe impacted by somebody operating an STR. And currently, the code specifically has minimum requirements within that notice to provide directions to receive a nuisance response plan, as well as information regarding code enforcement. That's already in the notice that goes out, so we, it was just sort of a city code section that was there and unneeded. So part of this process, again, is to sort of trim down some of the fat in the city code as well as, you know, that's sort of the purpose of what this, these omnibus updates are.
Make it easier for everybody to understand, correct?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. There's also, there's also, you know, you can literally Google short-term regulations Oxnard, and you'll get an entire webpage there of all things STR and FAQ, how a permit is issued, all that information's on the website as well.
Thank you. I appreciate the work you guys did. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilman Taran?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Zaragoza, for the presentation and information. I'm wondering, just given that it is an election year, and I just like, you know, for it to be on the public record, there is seemingly administrative updates in the sign regulations for election signs in public property and in the public right of way. Can you just summarize a little bit about what those changes were, just so folks know about that?
Sure. So chapter 16 of the code would already prohibits the election signs being placed on public property. However, by putting these in chapter seven, we would declare those a public nuisance and be able to issue citations in the event that that, that city code provision is violated. It also strengthens the definition of what an election sign is, so it wouldn't just be a freestanding sign, it would also be a sign that would be tied to a pole or to a bike and things like that. So, so that's essentially what this, this city code update does.
Great, thank you. That's my question.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, so motion on this item?
Mayor Zaragoza?
Any speakers?
There are no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Thank you so much. Motion to approve?
I will move the recommended action.
Okay. Okay, first by Councilman Taran, and second by Councilmember Basua. Roll call?
Councilmember Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Councilmember Parello?
Yes.
Councilmember Taran?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Aye.
Mayor Protem McDonald? Mayor Zaragoza?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Our next item is M two. This is fire department, subject Oxnard EMS Core Project Update and Staff Request. Recommendation, the city council one, receive under report on the progress of the Oxnard EMS Core Workforce Development Project to approve and adopt a resolution to amend the resolution number 15800, authorizing a full-time equivalent position pursuant to chapter four of the city personnel rules and regs to include administrative services coordinator limited term position to fill the grant EMS core educator role and reclassification of the department's community paramedic position to EMS specialist senior and to perform grant administration activities and EMT program education. Three, approve and adopt a resolution to amend the resolution number 15801, authorizing classification and salary schedules pursuant to chapter four of the city personnel rules and regs, and to add establish the EMS specialist seniors classification salary schedule. And four, authorize the city manager or designate to approve the budget appropriation for the use of the state grant fund to ten upon award. And of course, this is a pre-recorded item under measure M, and we do have our chief, Alex Hamilton, for any additional information. Council members? You went 25 words or less, how we doing?
We're looking forward to getting a fly released to stop recruiting young adults to, to join our program.
And I know you've, you've been doing that for, for quite a while. Motion, motion to, oh, Councilman Taran?
I'm happy to make a motion, but just while we have the chief here, you know, I say it all the time, but I'll absolutely put it for this one because it deserves highlighting. Because measure M prohibits a live presentation tonight, so the public probably has no context unless it's asked about, would you mind just summarizing a little bit about the EMS Core and what the intention is behind the program?
Yeah, absolutely. This program was actually established about 10 years ago up in Alameda County, and essentially it's looking to take young adults that maybe have had some kind of adverse upbringing and, and give them opportunities that they may not have been exposed to in the past. And so in this case, the Public Works Alliance, the umbrella group that oversees these grant ideas, has other programs, but this one specifically is around young adults getting an EMT certification as sort of a window into healthcare very broadly, and then a window into the fire service more specifically and, and pre-hospital care. So, so that's the goal. The grant is $1.27 million from the state EDD or Economic Development, excuse me, Employment Development Department, and it would allow us to train 60 young adults as EMTs to hopefully go on and become firefighters, paramedics, even into healthcare and in a different field. This program up in Alameda County has been running for 10 years, has put 500 young adults through their program. Four of them actually went on to become doctors, so. And our goal would be that 100% of them get through the National Registry EMT Certification or, or test, and that within six months, 100% of them are employed. That's our goal.
Great, thank you so much, Chief, and this is a really great example of when we talk about providing opportunities to young people in this area to, to increase their own skill sets and knowledge levels and their own personal marketability in, in this area. I mean, this is what really catapults young people and, and lineage for them beyond them to next level for them, at least in their own personal growth, their own professional growth, and their own economic growth. So thank you again for that. I appreciate the summary.
Thank you.
Chief, one of the things too that you mentioned before, that this includes young ladies and young men, both which I think is really, really, the diversity there is extremely important, just for the people to understand.
Yeah, that, and like, yes, we're, we're looking for as many young men and women as we can, but also it includes a whole range of wraparound services for these young adults. And so if they need help with transportation, with housing, with just getting their high school equivalency or GED, so there's, there's a whole range of services that we're going to help, help them succeed in this program.
Thank you, sir. So you made a motion?
Yes, I'll move the recommended action.
Mayor Zaragoza, excuse me, Mayor?
No speakers?
There are no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Bert.
Yes, Chief, thank you very much for the report. A couple of questions. If you could tell the public didn't take a chance to opt to read this, this will impact people from what age to what age have the opportunity to get involved?
Yes, the, the program's eligible adults from 17 and a half to 26.
And a couple of other questions. I do appreciate the fact how, exactly what the mayor said, you're going to give people an opportunity to get, I don't know that you would call it a second chance, but you give them an opportunity to do a real job, a real potential, a job that you could support a family on, and that you could travel with it if you want to take it and go somewhere else, an opportunity, a chance at life, a better life. There is one line in, on page 326, and just a clarification. It says, "Those connected from, those disconnected from school or work or certain eligible justice involving young adults." What, with respect, the reason I ask this, I got a call, they asked, is this going to allow gang members to get into this or people that have drug problems in the past, criminal, as long as they clean up? Or how, is there a screening?
So in other iterations of this program, what they've done is, is particularly if those crimes were committed as a minor, they'll help get those, those records sealed or expunged, but it really does depend on, on the, the nature of the crime, because you still need to be eligible to become an EMT. So you can't be a felon. I believe there's, there's certain categories of violent crime and sex crime. There's certain categories that, that would, would deem you ineligible to be a part of the program because you simply couldn't become an EMT. But, but on lower level issues where if they've just made a terrible mistake, that's something that we can work with, we can help them.
Thank you. And the funding, when the funds are exhausted, do you perceive that this program would continue on with requests for general fund, or it would, is it just depends on how successful the program is? Because the concept is terrific.
Yeah, I, to a certain extent, I'm hoping that this will be a little bit of a proof of concept, where we've actually found a way to lower the barriers to get more of our, our local residents applying for the, for the fire department, for example. But I am hoping to continue this program through grant funding past this current grant period and actually expand it into a true apprenticeship program where folks, we take them, we give them EMT training, they spend six months, six to 12 months out in the field, they go on to become a paramedic, and with all of that training, they'll actually also end up with an associate's degree. So we've sort of got a longer term vision to expand this program further, but I, I'm not looking to come back to council with a general fund request anytime soon.
Okay, thank you very much. Wish all the success in this. I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a first by Councilman Taran. We need a second? Second by Councilor Parello? Roll call?
Councilmember Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Councilmember Parello?
Yes.
Councilmember Taran?
Yes, and thank you for the second. I thought I was going to die here, so.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Aye.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Zaragoza?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Chief. Our next item is M three. This Public Works is a five-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 25 to 29. Recommendation, city council receiving file the final capital program document with incorporated changes per city council direction from the June 4th, 2024 city council meeting. The Public Works Transportation Committee recommended this item be forwarded for the full council discussion, and the city council approved this item with modifications on June 4, 2024. And this is a pre-recorded item, and we do have Mr. Kessler to answer any questions. Any council members have any questions on this item at this time? Okay, if not?
Mayor Zaragoza?
I was going to ask that. Do we have any speakers on this item?
There are no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Thank you. If not, go ahead, Councilman Taran?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Kessler, for the presentation and the updated CIP document. Just so that we can recap, part of the presentation did revisit some category four priority items that were discussed at a previous council meeting. Would you mind just recapping those for the public so we have it on the record as well that those were included in this item?
Nice summary, yeah.
Yeah, certainly. Good evening, Mayor, council members. At, at the June council meeting, your body voted to promote two projects to the priority list. One was to be put in the first position, top priority, the, the second was to be put in about position 12 out of what would be 14 projects. The first one is the, called the South Oxnard Center Lighting Project. That can be found on page 59 of the CIP booklet in front of you. That was promoted to position one. The second project is the Oxnard Police Department Facilities Planning and Feasibility Study. That can be found on page 50 of the CIP book that you have, and that was also included as priority project 12.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler.
Great, thank you. And my last thing on here is, I try to be paperless as much as possible. I like accessing things in the cloud or on my laptop when I, when I need to, sometimes even from my city phone, but something like this, a hard copy's also appreciated, but I especially want to thank you for double siding the pages to save paper. I, again, I like to be as paperless as possible, but when we have something hard copy, I appreciate it when someone takes the time to do that, and it worked out. Great, so thank you for that.
Thank you. So we need a motion on this item? Moved by Councilmember Basua? Second by Madrigal? Roll call?
Councilmember Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Councilmember Parello?
Yes.
Councilmember Taran?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Aye.
Mayor Protem McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Zaragoza?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Item M four, this is Public Works Department, authorization to accept a federal grant of $3.8 million for the Kamala Neighborhood Water Cast Iron Replacement Capital Improvement Project. Recommendation, the city council accept the financial, the federal grant, excuse me, from the U.S. House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee in the amount of $3,806,152 with 20% local match with the Kamala Neighborhood West Cast Iron Replacement Capital Improvement Project C 2228, and to authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreement and the financial director to, or designate to submit financial reports and grant claims and, and approve budget appropriations for the use of the grant funds and direct, and the director of Public Works or designate to submit non-financial reports. This item did not originate in committee, and this is a capital improvement project specifically listed in the city capital improvement program budget, which was previously approved by the city. And of course, this is a measure M, pre-recorded item, and we do have?
Mr. Tim Beeman, I'm the--
Okay. Thank you. Any, by the way, this is, was this a Brownlee money that we, that we got from Congresswoman Brownlee, a member having the presentation on here in front of City Hall? Okay, Councilor Parello?
Is there a use-by date on this money? If we don't use it by a certain date, we lose it?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. My name is Tim Beeman. I'm the interim assistant director of Public Works overseeing water and wastewater. Councilmember Parello, there is some guidelines that we do need to follow, the way that these funding requirements work, because they do like to see it within, the work start within the next year. And we are about 90% done with this phase of the project, with the design phase of the project four. So the overall cast iron pipe replacement is actually also in three phases, so this is the first phase. We're expecting to put it out to bid by the end of the calendar year.
Thank you. And, and Mayor-- And, and Mayor, yes, Julie Brownlee was-
Julie Brownlee was.
She definitely brought the bacon.
Fantastic.
Speakers?
Councilmember Turan, any speakers on this item?
Mayor Saragosa, there's no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Councilmember Turan?
Thank you, mayor. And thank you, Mr. Beeman, for the info and for the item. Do we just have a ballpark on how old the, um, current cast iron pipes are that are slated to be replaced in this neighborhood?
So throughout the neighborhood, it does range. Um, we've seen anything from fifty to sixty years, and that's actually quite a long time for cast iron pipe. The fact that we don't have more break, knock on wood, is, is more pretty impressive, so.
Yes, thank you for that. And, um, we'll be replacing it with, uh, what material piping?
We'll be using C nine hundred PVC, uh, which is specifically made for water infrastructure.
Thank you. And this question has come up in the past, and we had other neighborhoods that had this, um, similar pipe replacement, uh, repair or pipe replacement happen. The PVC we're using, um, its intention, i- its use is for transporting water, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so there's no worry about leaching of chemicals or PVC, you know, anything like that?
No, that is correct.
Great, thank you. So I just wanted to ask that, because I know it's something that come up in the past, and just wanted it to be, uh, stated on the record. Thank you again for the information.
And then, my understanding that PVC, and last time we had a presentation, that's good for another hundred years?
Yes, and so there's been many studies done, because PVC pipe is, in the civil engineering world, is relatively new, and so we haven't hit a hundred years of pipe being installed, but the, the, what I often see on paper is at least eighty years, but we expect it a much less.
So maybe, uh, Councilmember Valenzuela might be allowed to see that, thinking.
You recommend action.
Okay, we got a first by Mayor Portem.
A second.
Second by Pirello, please vote. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, because I know it's not working.
Councilmember Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Councilmember Pirello?
Yes.
Councilmember Turan?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Aye.
Mayor Portem McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, uh, item number five, this is, uh, Human Resources Department Subject Resolution to certify, certifying exemptions to CalPERS one hundred and eighty-day wait period for employment of a retired annuated. Recommendation, the City Council adopting resolution certifying, certifying, excuse me, an exception to the CalPERS one hundred and eighty-day wait period for employment following retirement of appointment. Jenny Kelly, excuse me, is interim assistant city attorney. This did not originate in committee, and there was a pre-recorded item on this issue. And we have Steve, he are HR Director, for any, any questions. Councilmember Pirello?
Yes, I appreciate this. Uh, I appreciate the work that Ms. Kelly's been doing, and, and the staff report's well put together, explaining why we needed to come back and the, and the quality, the type and quality and importance of the work she's doing. I have one question for, um, an explanation in the resolution itself, and the reason I ask is because quite some years ago, this particular phrase was in the Starfleet Press with a very derogatory term, golden handshake. Can you please explain that? And I appreciate it's in the resolution the way it is, and there is no golden handshake here.
Good evening, Steve Novo, Human Resources Director. Uh, golden handshake is something that CalPERS refers to as in you, you basically are, are purchasing additional service credit for the employee for them to then retire. Um, it is something that jurisdictions will do oftentimes when they're gonna do layoffs or something like that, they'll do it as, trying to do it as a cost-saving measure. But under the regulations with PERS, we just have to certify that Ms. Kelly, when she left the city, it's a regular retirement, it's not due to a golden handshake or anything like that.
Thank you very much. That's, I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
Councilmember Turan?
Thank you, mayor. And I said it earlier, but because the public is deprived from seeing a live presentation tonight because of Measure M, um, I'm wondering if we could just state for the record, um, why we have, uh, Ms. Kelly returning for a temporary kind of interim role, and, uh, how long we've been trying to fill that position, knowing that, uh, she was looking at retiring?
Sure. I, I don't know. Steve, do you want to speak to some of the things she's working on, why we need her to come back?
Sure. So, uh, we did start the recruitment several months ago, and so far have not had, uh, success in finding a qualified candidate. Um, and we are continuing to work, uh, on that recruitment. So Ms. Kelly, when she left at the end of, uh, last month-
Excuse me.
-was still working on, uh, several litigation-related matters that, uh, she is the best person to complete, uh, arbitration briefs and other, uh, very substantive documents that require a lot of detailed attention and knowledge of the case. So that is why we, uh, really, uh, are asking you politely to approve this so that we can bring her back to close out those projects.
Thank you. And then the last thing, maybe Mr. Novo can answer this one. Um, it's stated in the staff report, but I, you know, I'm gonna ask it just for the record. Um, if the council approves this request, uh, for Ms. Kelly to be onboarded again, again, on a temporary basis, uh, will she receive any benefits, incentives, compensation in lieu of benefits, or anything like that, um, as part of her, uh, temporary employment with the city?
Yeah, no, the only thing she can receive is the salary that's within the range of the assistant city attorney. So she cannot get any benefits, she doesn't accrue any leave, um, it's just salary only.
Thank you. And, um, will this cost any extra money for the city?
Uh, no, because there's currently a vacant position, so she's essentially kind of backfilling that vacancy as we're recruiting for it. So the salaries, basically that salary's just moving to her.
Yep, all right. Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
So Steve, he's officially retired, then is what it is?
Correct.
Yeah. And this, it used to be one year, or, or it just, uh?
Uh, the, the regular sit-out that retirees have to do is normally six months.
Six months.
And then they can come back in an extra help capacity. It's nine hundred and sixty hours per year.
Nine hundred and sixty.
Um, yeah.
Okay, so well, thank you so much. Motion? Any speakers on this?
Mayor Saragosa, there's no speakers virtually or in person for this item.
Okay, so, moved by Mayor Portem, second? Second by Councilmember Turan, roll call. Thank you, chief.
Councilmember Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Councilmember Pirello?
Yes.
Councilmember Turan?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Aye.
Mayor Portem McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, before we adjourn, we're gonna go back into closed session to continue with the evaluation of a city attorney, no return after a closed session. Thank you.
We're back from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, any remarks, refunds from closed session?
There is no report out of closed session on my evaluation.
Okay, so we are adjourned. Thank you.